This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, Provo City Council, where it will also be available for our interviewing. Please be aware that the microphones in the room pick up the noise of paper and other rustling objects. Further, be aware that the microphones can pick up side conversations. Let's begin with a roll call.
John Curtis.
Wayne Parker.
George Garrett.
Bryce Smooford.
Dave Sewell.
Elizabeth Vanderwerken.
David Harding.
Gary Winterton.
Brian Jones.
Flip Strachan.
Thank you. And the open prayer will be provided by Colin Mosquito of New Ranch and Council Office.
All in heaven, we come before thee in prayer and give thanks that we can serve the community here in Provo and that it is something that we have chosen to do and that these wonderful people have chosen to do. And we're grateful for their service and please bless them on their decisions and help them to do what is best for Provo. Pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Looks like we have one set of minutes to conclude today, the March 7, 2017 work meeting. Are there any corrections or comments related to that? If not, I'd like to adjourn objections. I'd like to declare the non-approve item as consent for the March 7, 2017 work meeting. We'll now move on to item number one, which is discussing the feasibility review of the new city center and public safety complex. And this item is to be presented by Chairman Vorgus.
Actually, I'm going to start, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. We will turn some time over to our architects to share a few thoughts with you. But just to give you a little background, the current city center was constructed and opened for business in 1972. Now, that doesn't seem like a very long time ago to me, but it's in the age of buildings built in the 70s. This one is approaching the end of its life cycle. We're beginning to see a number of problems structurally and with the long water damage on various parts of the complex and roofs needing to be replaced and fascia falling off. It's warranted a look at what would be the best approach to resolve any of the issues concerning the city center buildings. So we really started this process about four years ago, looking at space needs. We started, as some of you may recall, we had a number of issues surface in the police department about that time period. And we asked a consulting firm to come in and look at the police facilities and ascertain their ability to serve the department. In 1972, the city's population was 55,000 people. Today, we're at 120,000 people. The police department's square footage has not changed in those intervening years. And so you can imagine, as we've added officers and added services and expanded our dispatch center, we've had some challenges trying to keep everybody in a good working condition. And subsequent to that, we invited Architectural Nexus and hired them to come in and do a space needs analysis for the rest of the city, trying to look at a 20-year time horizon for city offices. So if we met our current needs and anticipated growth in the community and needs for the next 20 years, how many square feet would we need to operate in? And so, and at the time, back in 2013, Architectural Nexus actually did a cost estimate. If we were to meet the needs of the police department, the justice court, which had just barely begun operating, and the city hall, we came out to about 160,000 square feet. And we currently have 67,000 square feet in our campus. And so we recognized that we were undersized and needed quite a bit of additional square footage in addition to the other concerns we had had relative to building. It's not seismically sound. Our police department operates in a building which, in a mild tremor, would collapse and take out a significant part of our ability to be effective emergency responders. So at the conclusion of that discussion, then, we started down two parallel paths. One was to bring in an organization called Placemakers, a planning consultant firm, to look at the redevelopment potential of these two blocks on which we sit in downtown. Recognizing that the property is not very efficiently utilized and there's a lot of open space on the block, is there, would there be value in exploring the idea of consolidating city hall into a smaller footprint, taller building, and then making the block available for redevelopment purposes? And so we went through a couple of design charades and a very involved public process and came out with a number of recommendations about design concepts that might be used on the city center block, should it be made available for redevelopment. In addition, they did a market study that determined that some additional housing, hotel use, and some additional office space could be sustained on the block. So subsequent to that, then, we, the other parallel track we were operating on was talking to a number of developers with the hope that perhaps between tax increment and the value of the land that could be made available for redevelopment, the city might be able to build at least a city hall, if not a public safety building, for comparatively low cost. We could invest the proceeds of the sale of the land and any tax increment that could be available to essentially write down the cost of a city hall building. And so we put out a request for proposals. We finally came down to three different development concepts, which were presented to the city. They were very exciting, lots of interesting proposals. But at the end of the day, the city's cost for virtually either any of the three proposals resulted in a lease payment to the city, in addition to giving the land and the tax increment, a lease payment of about, between $2.2 and $2.5 million a year. And that only met the needs of the city hall. It didn't meet the needs of police, fire, and the justice court. And so we kind of stepped away from it and said, well, maybe the market's not right. Maybe it's just not time. But trying to come up with $2.5 million when we've been spending somewhere around $300,000 a year on general maintenance of this complex seemed pretty far out of reach. So we kind of stepped back and said, well, we'll just kind of wait out the issues. Well, as time has progressed since 2014... Go ahead, Dave. I'm sorry.
Really quick, so I understand that... So we would be paying $2.5 million at least?
Yes.
It was not, we would be...
That's correct. We have to donate the value of the land and all the tax increment and provide $2.5 million in a... And it was a lease purchase, but it was over an extended period of time. I think it was 40 years, actually. It was what was recommended to us. And so, yeah, we just felt like that was more than the general fund could stand to sustain that. So as conditions have continued to deteriorate, we're finding some additional issues which are going to require some investment here on the block. We decided we ought to maybe take a fresh look. So we invited Architectural Nexus to come back and do some analysis on three different options for considering what to do with a city hall and a public safety building. So option one we looked at was trying to respond to the idea that we have a civic center in Provo. The city's just not part of it. There is a civic center which houses state and county facilities. And so one of the questions was, could we build on some open space on the existing county courthouse, state courts blocks at University and Center Street and share the structured parking that already exists there? And then build a public safety building, but do it off-site from the county state complex. So that was option one. Second option we looked at was building two new buildings, one city hall and one public safety building, and then demolishing everything else on this block. So staying on the block, putting city hall in one corner, the public safety building in the other corner, opposite corner, and then essentially surface parking and potentially providing some shared event space. So if you vacated the parking lot on a Friday afternoon, you're coming to do a rooftop concert in the civic block. And so that was option number two. And we looked at a third option, which would be to build a new city hall or conversely, a new public safety building, but to essentially build on empty space on this block and then move those functions out of the existing building into the new building and then remodel enough space to meet the needs for either the city hall or the public safety building. So the idea was to build one building new. And for the purposes of the option, we looked at building a new city hall and remodeling for a public safety building. And so those are the three options that we asked the architects to look at. And so they looked at how that might come together, what it might look like. And as our internal working group considered all of those, we felt like there were some pretty significant negatives associated with options one and three. While the costs were not that much different, the functionality became a little more difficult. For example, to build on the county block because the footprint would, of necessity, be smaller, it meant that the building went taller. And so it changed some pretty significant, what we call adjacencies, organizations that work a lot together would ended up being scattered among all seven floors. It created this kind of lack of consistency and efficiency that we might gain in other locations. And we had not had any discussion at all with the county about this and about sharing parking and so on. And so it was, there was a lot of additional work to be done on that one to even determine if it was feasible. The other thing that we discovered in the process was that the cost of remodeling per square foot exceeded the cost of building new per square foot in this building, largely because of its age and the need to replace a lot of the infrastructure that's here. And so our working group, that the mayor asked to kind of focus on this, kind of came down to settling on option two as the one that we'd like to dive deeper into. And so the purpose of our meeting today is, number one, for you to hear the presentation from the architects and explore what they've explored with us. And then to try to ascertain what ought to be appropriate next steps. Those next steps could range all the way from doing nothing at all and coming back and just, you know, coming up with a plan to continue to Band-Aid the city hall complex. It could be to phase a project. It could be to do two separate projects, maybe do a public safety building first and then a city hall later, or any combination thereof. And so we've given in the staff reports some general numbers about what the costs look like and what the financing might look like if we were to do it all with general obligation bonds. I don't know that it necessarily needs to be all with general obligation bonds, but we wanted to give you kind of the outside window of cost. And so from that perspective, then, what I'd like to do is introduce Peter Moyes from Architectural Nexus, who will kind of walk you through the analysis that's been done and show you kind of how the city hall and the public safety building might fit on the block and might relate to each other. And then we'll talk a little about financing and then we'll entertain the questions you have. Peter?
As I referenced, we were hired in 2013 to do an analysis of the existing city hall project. Is here, or should I go up there? I'll just go up front. I got some handouts I'm going to be dealing with in a minute. Probably some unapproved handouts. We were going to do some analysis of existing building and of the departments that are in it. And we actually went through virtually every department in the city and met with the heads of every department in the city and talked to them about their needs, both immediately and in the long term over the next 20 years. We developed a matrix. This is just one page of the matrix we developed. And you can see that this matrix looks at the names of each room. This is just the mayor's office area. The type of room it is, the quantity we'd need, the square footage we'd need. We had to gross it up to get to total square footage. We projected in some costs. And by room, we kind of came to totals for what we were looking at. And as I say, this is one page of a document. We took those pages and come... Can you go down to like the fourth page in on this? It's...
Number four.
Yeah, go to like four there. I'm guessing four is right. Go to three. Sorry, one page up. Thank you. And then by department, is this a pointer that I can use?
The green dot in the middle.
Okay. Cool, cool. Okay. So then by department, we looked at each group and then put them into one of three different types of buildings, a city center building, a public safety building, or a municipal court building. And by doing that, we could come to a total of how much square footage we'd need and more things were going to go. And this was done originally in 2013. And then we set that report aside for several years. When we were contacted again, we were asked to look at three options to take that information and expound a little further. And I'm done with that document. If you could close that document and open the document that's labeled "copy of" something, something, something. I'm going to hand these down each side. There's 12 copies of each. And that's not the one I'm looking for. There we go. Thank you. We were asked to explore three different options, as Wayne said. And this is the document we were given that outlined the options we were asked to explore. First option was to look at creating a new city hall up in the, by the county buildings and then remodeling the existing public safety building. The second option was to put a new city hall on this block right where the, it's a breached on tire or fire? Breached on tire building sits and then put a brand-new public safety building here. And I'll show you the graphics of this in just a second. Third option was again to put the city hall over here and then take this site and renovate it for a police department. So this will just walk you quickly through how we tackle this. First of all, I'll show you just generally how we go through our process. Does this advance slides here?
Yep, it does.
Okay, so, fingers crossed. This is another project we did, but I just want to show you how this works for reference sake. This is a study we did for the Provo Court Building. It's currently under construction, which unfortunately, we're not doing, but it's a study we did for, just the same, where we looked at each thing that went into the court building, stacked it up, got kind of a general shape of the mass. From the general shape of the mass, we do a hand sketch of what it might feel like. This is kind of a more traditional look. This is kind of a more contemporary look. From those hand sketches, we then take that information and turn it into a rendering. And again, a more contemporary look and turn it into a rendering. All this is built off of starting with spaces that we know the building's going to need and then organizing things along. I show you this process because what we looked at for Provo City Center stops short of the rendering. It ends at this kind of hand sketch level. And if you were to move forward, we'd take that next step. So here we go. Here's our current block. And option one was to renovate here for the police and then go up the block, up the city complex blocks for the city hall. So option one was to renovate, remove the rest of the existing city hall or city complex for future development, leave this block open for future development, and take the city hall elsewhere. As we looked at the city hall block, we looked at our adjacencies, who happens to share that block with us. And then by function, we stacked the various functions four by four by four. And all these are color-coded back to the original document we showed you with the space matrix. So the ground floor would have customer service and then the municipal court on council room. And then more council space. And we just looked at how things would stack up. It gets to be a fairly tall building because it's a fairly tight site. Well, it kind of stacks like that. Any more contemporary look, it might feel something like that. Okay? And then based on the information, we've got a size and a scale that actually relates to what has to go inside it. Option two and three start with the same thing, which is looking at... Whoa, that's just going on me. Holy smokes. Okay.
The presentation.
Okay, option two and three, basically, the city hall's the same element on this side. And we start by just looking at how things would stack up. We start with the council room on the ground, which you think it makes a lot of sense, community development, customer service, et cetera. And then we stack our remaining floors on top of that and get a sense for how tall that building would have to be. We thought we were pretty clever. We put the core of the building right behind the fly of the county center so that nobody has to look in the back of that. And we kind of wrap around there. And then we renovate this into a police building. We leave this area open for future development. That's option three. And option, I show you that just because option two and three basically do the same thing. Option two kind of goes through the same process, but over here now, we build a new police, public safety building, police and fire and municipal court. And again, we look at how the elements stack up to make sure everything fits on the site. And then to give you a feel for what that might mass like, the mass starts to get like this. This front area is retail that we just proposed. We're not saying that's part of the design, but we say that Center Street element for retail, public safety building behind it, and city center on the corner with a nice presence to the park and basically says, "Welcome to Provo." And it might feel something like that. Okay? And then looking at it from the other direction, it might feel something like that for the public safety building. So that was the graphic analysis that we put together to see where this would take us. The graphics are fun, right? As architects, we love to do the graphics. But we also have to get down to the reality of the numbers. And so we went, we were asked to go back and update all of our 2013 cost estimates to reflect 2017 current construction costs. I guess I can say this. I talked with Construction Control Corporation. This is a professional cost estimating firm in Utah and got current construction cost estimates from multiple city halls and public safety buildings being built around the state and worked with them to revise our costing figures. And this is the summary of how the costs come together. Option one has that new city center that's up the road plus remodeling the existing building. And we look at the basic building construction costs. And then from the building construction costs, we add in other project costs, which are costs such as design fees, you're going to have to pay somebody to design the building, testing and engineering fees, utility connections, land acquisition, moving costs, all that kind of fun stuff that, you know, it's not construction, but you're going to have to pay for it. And that gives us a total construction budget of $25 million for the city center, $14 million for the public safety building, a total of $40 million. There's another line here that we have called "other project costs." And I want to tell you what that line entails. That line would entail furniture and technology for these new buildings. Now, we didn't build it into the budget because if you want to reuse your furniture, we reduce that number significantly, right? If we can take some of your IT components and move them, we don't have to buy new. We want to acknowledge the fact that there could be costs in this line, but it's up to you to decide if you want to spend them or not. And if you just want to build all new, full out, the project sits at... You've got to add that number and it's about $47 million. It's a lot of money. This is the tough part. When we go back and we look at the renovation option... I'm going to back a few slides here. When we go back and look at the renovation option... There we go. Court... Oh, being difficult. There we go. For this remaining piece of the building, that's only a fraction of the square footage the police department will actually need. It's not nearly enough square footage to even begin to include the municipal court. And the police and the fire station gets about 2/3 of what they're looking for as well. So when we did this analysis and submitted this information to Wayne a couple of weeks ago, he said, "Well, we're not comparing apples to apples. We're comparing 39% of the needed square footage to 100% of the needed square footage if we build all new." Does that make sense? As we look at the options two and three, option two and three are essentially identical except it's a new public safety building versus an existing remodel. And the existing remodel is far cheaper, but it's cheaper because we're only building about 40% of the space that would ultimately be needed. And Wayne said, "We really need to compare apples to apples. It's not a fair assessment." If we save and renovate the existing public safety building, we're going to have to add on to it. And so he asked us to revise this analysis and plug in the cost add-on. And we didn't gross these things out. We didn't deliberately try and bias things. In fact, what we did is we added on at the cost of the new public safety building down here. And this is what happens. And I'm just going to bounce between these two slides really quickly. We can see, we can see we're at $40 million, $59 million, and $40 million. If we add that on, we're actually at $60 million, $59, and $59. By the time we actually try and save this building and then add to it, it's the most expensive option on the table. Now, we're not advocating one thing or another. We're just trying to explain our process so that we make informed decisions as to where you might want to go. As we talked before, in 2013, as we began this process, we talked to every agency in the building, every department, and got their wish list. And we built that into our space matrix. And then we costed up the space matrix. And all the numbers you see in here are based off of everybody getting everything they want. I got to tell you, I had a lot of heartburn over the numbers as we saw them. And we sat down over the past couple of days and looked at a couple of ideas on how we could reduce costs for any one of these options. And I want to run those ideas past you, if you don't mind. So some options for cost reduction strategies. First of all, I recommend that we could reduce at least 5% of the square footage out of the building with minimal impact to the project. I'll give you an example. When we talked to the municipal court, they said, "We need a Sally Court." When we talked to the police department, they said, "We need a Sally Court." If the police department and the municipal court are in the same building, they can share a Sally Court. That's 960 square feet. It's doubled up in our documents. But we really didn't know where that was going to land. I believe that if we had an office that was listed at 150 square feet and we reduced it down to 143 square feet, would somebody really feel the difference of that 5% reduction? I suspect not. I believe that we have got at least 5% of the square footage that we can save in this building just by doing a deeper dive. Okay? Second idea to put on the table. We know that if you look at those stacking diagrams, we put the really important things that the public interacts with the most at the ground level, the customer service area, the city council space. Once those are built, they're built. And they're probably not going to change significantly over the life of the building. As we move up in the building, we have a lot of administrative floors. We could consolidate those administrative floors more tightly initially, build the square footage, but shell out the square footage. And then as time unfolded and we knew that departments expanded, we could just move into that shelled space and we'd already captured the space. I ran some new numbers with Construction Control. We think that overall across the board, we could reduce the required square cost per square foot by about $17.50 a square foot. That would result in another potential $3 million in savings. Now, I got to be fair about this. We ran that number based on already taking option number one and taking 9,200 square feet out of the program to begin with. So we're not doubling up there. We subtracted that out before we take that savings out. Third and finally, there was a request made that we look at reskining the county center, the face of the county center, so it belonged more with city hall, which we think is a great idea. It's a wonderful idea. We put in a plug number of $2 million to save that, to do that. Well, you know what? I'll speak for the design community. I can't do that, but I'm going to do it anyway. Any architect, ourselves included, that had the opportunity to work on this project would happily design that county center as a bid alternate. And if it fits the bid, great, wonderful. And if it doesn't fit, it's a very simple alternate to cut. But that cost is already built into our projections, that $2 million cost. So my sense is, these are just a couple of ideas we came up with initially. My sense is, there's still the opportunity to find a little bit more money in the project. As you consider the cost options, and by the way, these slides I just shared with you, I made 12 copies again that have the options shown and then the cost estimating information that supports it. As you consider the numbers, I believe that whether it's Architectural Nexus or any other architectural firm, there are opportunities to find savings. We've looked at, right now, Wayne, I believe we've looked at worst-case scenario. And I think that's prudent for us to do. Last thing we want to do is get caught, you know, underestimating where things are going. But I don't think the situation is quite as dramatic as the numbers might imply. Thank you for letting me present. And questions? Yeah. Absolutely.
As you compared the 2013 to update cost, you probably noticed quite a substantial increase.
Very much.
I'm guessing it's probably 30%.
Our original 2013 documents, I can tell you this off the top of my head, we were, for raw construction costs, we were sitting at about $210 a square foot for raw construction costs. And now we're sitting at about $235, $240 a square foot. So it's significant.
So what's your feeling on how it will continue? In other words, we're talking about today's cost by the time this all gets...
I'm going to back up on this presentation. Darn it. That's me cursing. If you take a look at the document I handed out to you, if you open any one of the three options... There's a first page that shows the summary of everything for those options. In fact, can I borrow? Yeah, I'll just show you where I'm pointing to. Got a few little graphs, whichever option we go to. And then we have a page after that that basically shows every department, right? And then there's a page after that that explains where all of our costing comes from. That page looks like this. Unfortunately, I wish I was on my Mac, but I'm not. If you take a careful look at this, what this page does is for the public safety building and for the city hall, we sat with Construction Control and item... and for the city hall, we sat with Construction Control and I designed, whether it's a roof or an exterior skin or a mechanical system, we outlined what product you'd have. But then we also included on our estimates, construction inflation. So, if you take a look at this page, which is the page before, and you get down into the colored areas down here, you will see there's a line there that says inflation at 6% per year. And we projected that inflation out at 6% across 15 months to get to the start of the city hall and across two and a half years to get to the start of the public safety building. So, again, we just did not want to get caught in a bad situation. So we have tried to incorporate that. And in talking with Construction Control, they said 6% is a conservative estimate of inflation. It might be running higher, but a year and a half from now, we might find the construction is cooled down. So it's kind of a safe middle ground bet. Long answer to a short question. Thank you. My kids tell me, "Ask Dad what time it is, he'll tell you how to build a clock." Yes, please.
So on the retail component, I assume that we'd be selling it up to a private developer and you're getting some offset to the cost from that?
That is our thinking. Let me walk you through what we were thinking with this process. We tried to save this darker shaded area in the back, we tried to save the entire back of the block for potential parking. With the feeling that 10, 20 years from now, we might find that mass transit or other options are significantly reducing the amount of public parking we're gonna have to have, right? We tried to save a really nice green space right in the heart of the block. I mean, the road, is it fourth that comes down here, comes, it opens, it kind of terminates right there. And the idea of opening it up to a nice public plaza felt like it made a lot of sense. We know the Cuddy Center has an amphitheater on the outside. We thought if we could create a little green strip that came through here that connected to the Cuddy Center, it would be a dynamite retail space. We held that retail swath across the front saying, you know, if we could get restaurants or eateries in here that fronted on Center Street, but then could open to the back, it would be, again, a wonderful opportunity. But that's us paying developer, which is kind of dangerous.
So I was wondering, did you consider the possibility of making that mixed use? Maybe put some residential on top there and would that offset the cost even more?
I think your opportunity along Center Street here is phenomenal, far better than what we've got currently. Whether you want to do that as mixed use or just pure retail, I think that's your call. I think the question is, does Provo City want to get in the developer business? Or do they want to sell that land and see what developers' options are put up on that? I'll tell you, I'm not the least bit surprised that a developer came back with an option that was $2.5 million a year, 40 years, $100 million for what we're saying should cost about 25 million. And you've given them the land to boot. So, my advice is, offer that land up and be very judicious in considering what folks would present there.
Underground parking.
Are you asking? Okay. Again, if you take a look at this document, we have projected in 50 stalls of underground parking for the public safety building and 50 stalls of underground parking for city halls. And that's built into the numbers as we projected it. If we went to purely surface parking, we could reduce costs, certainly. With the police department, there is kind of an underlying assumption that we're gonna go underground because we're gonna have Sally Port and other connections that we're gonna need to get to. So at least on the police department's side, you probably need to hang on to that. One of the real challenges of renovating this part of the block is that the parking extends fairly, you know, fairly elaborately. And if we only save a small piece of the existing city center, we've gotta solve ins and outs and all kinds of issues associated with that underground parking. And we're gonna spend more money to demolish stuff that's gonna work poorly. I'm probably getting too far into the weeds. Short answer is, we took a careful look at underground parking, incorporated 100 stalls, total 15 each building.
So there wouldn't be any necessarily underneath that retail?
I think that's really, the city's decision is to how to put those 50 stalls in. We could put 50 stalls in under here, we could extend it back in this direction, we could extend it out in this direction. The question is, do you want to encumber land that you might turn around and lease or somehow, or offer for development for someone else? And now you're gonna get into condominiumization of that property, I think. And so we didn't say, "This is where it goes," only, "This is what you're gonna need quantity-wise."
I have some thoughts, I just don't know if now's the time to express them or ask the questions. They're not necessarily directly to the architectural design.
Okay, and I do want to say another thing. I probably should have stopped on this page. This is not a proposed design. This is a feel for how, as we mass things up, it could go together. We would not begin to assume that this is a final design. I mean, it hadn't been approved by anybody. We're just having fun because it's what we like to do.
It was largely in, I mean, we do these in a way that sort of suggests massing, which is to say, how does the building look in comparison in size and scale to the other buildings in the general area? You know, as you look at the placemaker study, they went a little deeper into the design options. And that's actually one of the reasons why we asked them to spec some renovation of the Cuddy Center, because that was one of the key recommendations from placemakers, was that if you do a complex here of some kind, all the buildings ought to relate architecturally. And we didn't want the Cuddy Center to continue to kind of be an anachronism in the block. So the idea was to reskin it, maybe have it look a little more, you know, some of what was recommended by placemakers actually kind of hark back to the 30s and 40s and 50s time period. And so the idea of a neon marquee or something that would come out over the sidewalk and just add some additional sort of sense of place. And so we said, "Well, as we're thinking about this, we think about a total block renovation, there's probably some value." And we called it reskining the Cuddy. So it wasn't necessarily remodel as much as it was putting a new face on it.
Please understand that our intent behind this was to develop enough information that we could do accurate costing to come back to give an idea of what does it cost actually achieve. And so, these graphics were created only to support the ability to create a decent cost model, if that makes sense.
Maybe the Ford Dave's question, if I could mention what our end game is. That might influence your questions. I suppose it'd be great if the council loved this and said, "Let's go do it today," but that wasn't our expectation. Our expectation is that the council would have enough information from this presentation to say, "We've gotta dive deeper," or "There's no reason to dive deeper because we just, we don't see any way that this happens." We didn't want to go any further with this, if it was just a non-starter to begin with from the councils. So there are tons of options still available, tons of paths still available. And if the council feels like this has a chance, you just need more information, we would propose a committee made up of prominent residents, to council members or administration, whatever looks good. And then work backwards from a decision timeframe, does that make sense? Of when we would have to have a decision on this, to lay all those questions out, get them all answered, and then bring forth a consensus project that has the best chance of meeting our base expectations.
So I jumped in, or?
Yeah, Mr. Ryan.
So, I really like, I like the idea of, where do I begin? I like the idea of the shelf, room to grow. I like the idea of maybe staging this a little bit. So perhaps, rather than doing it all at once, we can do it in stages. I had some questions, just reading the document, but a lot of them have answered already today. There were the three options, and all of them were priced fairly similarly, I think.
And that was very surprising to us. To be honest with you, we thought there'd be more deviation. And I thought for certain that the remodel would come out more cost economic, you know, as a better cost option.
Yeah. But I imagine at this stage of just, these are estimates, and 1.2 million difference between the high and the low is probably insignificant, or not insignificant, but within the range of the estimate. With the option one, using the civic complex, it was mentioned that we haven't addressed it with the county. I know that at least some conversations about, you know, it would suggest that they're at least open to talking about some options. I think that that might be valuable to do, to have, to explore that. I don't know exactly what kind of answers we're looking for, you know, the non-starters, but I would hope, at least at this point, that we're not ruling out option one. A couple thoughts on that massing that showed, okay, you know, here's the city hall or the chambers. One possible idea, depending on where the, sorry, if you go back to option one.
Oh, I, let's go and take a minute, there's a lot of slides in here.
You know, is using the historic county courthouse as the chambers, is that an option with the county? And if so, then maybe that reduces our overall square footage need.
That element.
Right, that element right there. You know, we talked about how that's pretty tight, but there is some parking nearby. I don't know, there may be some options there, so I would hope that we would explore that a little bit more. And I guess my final thought, you know, this building was built 50 years ago, and now we say, eh, it's end of life, it's not worth trying remodel, it's not worth keeping, kind of thing. It's, you know, kind of a disposable building 50 years on. We have some pretty neat buildings in Provo that are much older than 50 years. And, you know, we have to be very cautious with public money and all of that. But I just wonder, is there any, is there any thought, any desire to look at, if we do something new, how do we do it so that in 50 years, it's not broke? That it's either worth saving, or it's built well enough so that it stands some of this with the upkeep? You know, I hate to spend the type of money that we're looking at it spending, and then in 50 years saying, ah, well, you know, it was nice to do something new.
May I comment on that for just a moment? If this were a developer building, I think that the costs we'd be looking at for initial construction would be significant, well, somewhat less. In looking at the pricing that we put together and talking with Construction Control, we very specifically looked at a 50- to 100-year building. Part of the reason why the construction costs are as inflated as they are is because we had tremendous concern over exactly what you're saying, that we'll build something that 20 years from now, it'll start falling apart. I was somewhat reticent, and Wayne knows this, I was somewhat reticent to come in and tell you the numbers because they seem so aggressively high. At the same time, I think it would be irresponsible for us to come in and present costs that would be dirt cheap, but ultimately would fail on you. If, again, you go back to the document we created here, what we tried to do on the second page, for each building, is to outline the different types of systems you could buy and what they'd cost, and then show you what we're projecting. So you can see, we're not doing Taj Mahal, but we're also not going spec developer quality. And we tried to find that really wise middle ground of something that will pull you along for 50 or 100 years instead of 30 or 20 or 30. I'm sorry, Dick, Dick knows this all too well. Part of the problem with this building is not just the layout, it's the systems in the building. The mechanical system is, I'm sorry, it's a mess. The structural system, the renovation structural system in here is, is just, Mike, I shouldn't even comment. Little steps taken 40 years ago, even whether you like the architecture or not, little steps taken 40 years ago could have had this building last another 40 years. And that, we want to avoid that. We have pride to anticipate what you're talking about.
Can I comment on that, too? I frequently reflect on what it must have been like, what the time they built the Tavernet Gold, or the County Building, or the State Capitol. They clearly made a decision to sacrifice far more than we're talking here, to build an iconic building. And now we're grateful they did, right? We've got these iconic buildings. So I think it's not only to me the construction cost, I think it's the design and that you build an iconic building that's worth saving 50 years from now. That would be amazing if we could reach that in design and everything where it truly was an iconic building.
Selling the city county building?
Yeah.
I mean, that.
The one on Forest Sound, not the one on 23rd Sound.
So there's two good examples, right? I mean, someday they're gonna tear that building down on 23rd Sound because it's really ugly and it's not iconic, it's functional.
Yeah. Not everything has to be iconic, but there should be some buildings in the city that...
At one point, we'd actually talked about, if you go back to, I won't make you flip through there, but think about the plan on the city center block, that council portioned being an iconic building.
Getting there, I promise. There's just a lot of slides in there. This element, right?
Yeah, so that could be an iconic building, and the building behind it could be a more functional building. Still nice, high quality, but, so that'd be an option, too.
We got, what, a seven-story building there? How does that fit into our Center Street design corridor? Obviously, I don't want to get into the details of our architecture, obviously, that hasn't been done yet, but it almost seems incompatible with what our current design corridor standard is.
We've got exactly that. We looked at those. And we also looked at the Utah Convention Center, which is on Center Street, up the road, and how they stepped back to get the massing. In fact, I shouldn't tell you this, I was the original architect on that project, hope you don't hate it. And we acknowledge the fact that we've got this dilemma right here on the Cuddy Center, that gigantic fly. And we felt like we had to do something to respond to that element. So we might ask for a variance from your own standards for your own building if you were to move forward on this site because of kind of the unique conditions of that adjacent building.
Let me just, not to complicate this, but add a little asterix into this. We spent so much time focusing on the needs here on this block, we haven't talked much about some other significant needs, not in cost, but in impact, and particularly our propane fire station. So I hope that as the discussion moved forward, that we could roll some of those smaller needs into this larger picture. I don't want anybody to feel like we've ignored those, it's just been all focus on this. But I just want a little placemaker for, we've got some other needs as well, not as significant, but easily as important.
Yeah. You cut the square footage on this building, you've got yourself a fire station. Is that border magnitude?
Okay, so we're a little over time for the initial discussion, so how would you frame our decision for this?
I think whether you answer it today or shortly, what we're looking for is a go/no-go, and not a go-build it, but a go-study it versus, don't even take the time to go study it. If there's a sense from the council that, wow, we might have the pieces here, we just need to figure out what they are, then we would like to come back and propose a deep dive with community and community dialogue that would yield an answer in time to make a decision for municipal election.
So council members, do you feel like you're prepared to give that signal, or do you...
I'd want to see some financial information from bonding. This is construction cost, that's, that's, you know, what the final cost is gonna be. So I would want to see what we're talking about as far as the block goes. Because it's gonna be very similar results. I have my option, I'd rather to build new personally, I want to see what that's gonna cost, it's really wrong.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sir, Mr. Ryan. At least some of those numbers are in the memo that we received. What I don't remember in there is, what is the cost of those band-aids? What I don't remember in there is, what is the cost of those Band-Aids?
We've got some more work to do there. We've done some preliminary work, but we do have some more to do. There's, there's, I think several million dollars, I mean, under 10, but six to seven to do some Band-Aids on this, hold it together for a few more years.
Not including size, would you allow?
Yeah, that includes some size.
So that, that, I think would be helpful in saying, but if it's, if that's going to take more study, well, I'm kind of to the point of saying, let's go forward and study it a little bit deeper. But, but yeah, I, I think, kind of like George was saying, to me, that's, that's where, weighing out the costs, what's the cost to Band-Aid it together and what's the cost of just cutting that and building new?
So it's obvious too, that a lot of opportunity cost, a lot of efficiency cost that won't show up on, on that paper.
You've got numbers up there, about 8 million, maybe we can find more. That brings it down to like 59, 60. What does that bring us to?
I'm, I'm kind of cheating on this. The, the discussion really lands on this outside the budget line item. This other project costs, outside budget items. If, if you want to reuse furniture, you know, or if you can reuse some of your IT, then you take the number off the 16 and it comes down. If you, if you save all that money, but then turn around and buy all new furniture and all the IT, you're back spending what you saved.
Right, and, and the value of the property we can sell off to the retail space is not shown?
Not even... Again, we wanted you to see the upper end possibility, recognizing there are a variety of ways we could step that back. But we didn't want to, we didn't want to come in with an overly optimistic view and then come back later and discover we were a couple million dollars off in the wrong direction. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I, I was still kind of curious if it was a significant amount that could be recaptured.
Yeah, again, just, just given the base square footage that would be involved there, it's something less than a million dollars in property value, so.
Blocks downtown are selling for $4 million a block, four and a half million a block.
And then the way you lay it out with the south, kind of the south portion of the block as parking, and eventually maybe some of that wouldn't be needed, maybe you could adjust. Right now we have, how many parking spaces on the block, both above and below ground? And when you build it out with 100 underground plus the south block, are you at or where, where are you?
I'm going to answer that a couple of different ways. First of all, we know that if we do a development over here, we're going to have to create a path for the fire department and police vehicles to get in, and that's what this little gesture is indicating. If we take a look at this zone across here, we anticipate that we can park in the range of 800 cars, depending on how we do it. Okay, it's just a function of how we do that. We add to that the 100 that were, we've programmed into the cost, and we're in the range of 850 to 900 cars. When we look at the ultimate load on these, on these buildings, you'll see that the document I gave out also projects the number of staff that's going to be required to, to be in each building. And the total staff is a little bit misleading because the police department staff is far greater than who's actually in the building at any given time. But we figured the building itself would need about 300 to 400 parking stalls in a given day for everybody involved in the project. That leaves a, a net texture of maybe 400 stalls, plus, I mean, it's just being very conservative, 400, 450 stalls.
Right, and how's that compared to the number of stalls that were...
Current, you know, current, believe today? In the, in the lot that's back here, I'm guessing, I've never counted those stalls.
250 exterior sound, I think, maybe, and then about 85, so it's three...
Are you, are you counting the, the part that's also behind the bridge on that?
Yeah, to pick, yeah.
Okay.
And then the top of it. So it's 340, or it's 330.
So approximately, well, more than double.
So there's a good possibility that some of that in the future would be developed as well.
Our thinking is, our thinking, and actually that's not true, Wayne's thinking, that we want to land bank this zone.
Right.
And, and that could turn into future Provo city development, that could turn into mixed use development. There's a plethora of options there. But as the city matures, there's some real value in land banking, especially downtown.
But to me, that's an important factor, that's why I asked.
Okay, well, we need to wrap up on this end of discussion. So it seems like we've got kind of two options here. I don't know if council members, if enough of you are ready to say, let's do a deep dive. If you still have more questions, it seems like there still are a lot of questions. Maybe we should just continue this in another work session. And if you have council members send your questions to administration meetings.
We can do, we've done, we've done the financing option, assuming a general obligation bond. If there, again, and we've, we've taken the worst case scenario. So if there are, you know, land sales to be generated, if we could reduce the square footage by a certain amount or did some things as alternates, you know, that just, that just decreases the size of the bond as you go forward. And we put kind of the general financing numbers for a $200,000 home in the memo, so it gives you a little sense of both public safety building and city hall, what, what that impact would be. We could, we could go a little deeper than that if you'd like as well.
Is it a serious option, would you consider making million dollar savings and have a new project estimate with that?
Sure.
Easy to do.
That's easy to do.
I'm sorry, I kind of sprung that on you.
No, no, that's fine. No, and, and again, we recognize there's not been any value engineering. We, you know, we've done none of that sort of thing to try to define how we could do it. This, we wanted to get to kind of a, maybe this is, I don't know, maybe it's a 10% design level so that we can get a rough cost estimate. You know, we'd obviously have to go a lot deeper. And again, we'd anticipate if you brought a citizens committee on board, you know, that a lot of those hard questions would get asked through that process and help us, again, come back, as the mayor suggested, with the consensus project that we could, we could all feel good about. So yeah, there's clearly a lot, a lot more work to do. But, but we, if, if it was just a, we don't see this in the cards at all, you know, then, then it's better to know that now than invest in a whole lot more time when you get that answer right.
As we did the rec center, one thing that just amazed me and the opportunity we had was, what do we have in our old place? And what can we get at our new place? And I don't see a lot of comparisons. What, you know, I'd like to hear, we have really got to define why we need it something here. And I think there's great opportunity for that, and I don't want to short ourselves. And look at what we're, what we were able to accomplish at the rec center. I were, I am concerned about dropping 5% in square footage. As I get, as I at least speak to people, that, oh yeah, I don't need quite this big a space until I get in it. And I just see that, oh my gosh, even the small, little incremental things that I do, I thought I could do better. And I just would not want to do, put ourselves out there at this point and, and shorten us.
May I respond to that? I, I think that 1% to 2% of that will be just pure redundancies. If, if we're adding the municipal court to the public safety building, we don't need two salad plates. I, I mean, that's an issue of cooperation, not an issue of need, right? And so easily, I, I believe that easily we'd find 1% to 2% of that with, just by getting our adjacencies right and getting everything into the right building. After that, I, I love the fact that you would like to capture as much space as possible. If, if the budget will allow that, wonderful. I was seeing a different perspective, which is, my goodness, this is getting to be a big number. Is there a proposal to, to help rectify that?
This, we're going to live with for 40 or 50 years at this point. And so I want to make sure that we have that opportunity as far as two salad plates. I don't know what we, what's involved in that. I know that I want the prisoners that we're bringing in, that our police are bringing in immediately, and we can plan for other things. But sometimes, I can't tell you when a crime is going to be committed and I want them in jail or whatever. And so I, I think that there's things that we do, no question, we're just floating here at the top. And I, I like to get, I, I think we really need to get into the weeds and figure a few things out there.
Thank you.
But I love it.
Are there council members that feel like this isn't worth exploring further? Seems like we're, we're all interested, I think, in varying degrees, so let's...
So if you have specific questions, we'd like to come back to the next work session and answer those to get you to a point where you're, where you have enough information to feel comfortable moving to the next level.
Could I maybe suggest two, two things? One is, council member, give us all your questions. The second is, we'll come back at the same time with the proposed public outreach, stewardship and commission process.
That would be great. I like that. Does anybody agree about that? Not hearing any objections, so that's all right. Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I just want to say thank you to Wayne and Dick, Jeff, to you working with you folks. And if we keep working with you, great, and if not, I just wish you the best of luck in this process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we had a short break scheduled. I believe there's an officer appreciation event downstairs. So we'll, we'll recess for about 10 minutes. We are a little behind, so try to, if any of you would like to go down and express appreciation for our officers, try to be back in 10 minutes if you can.
Perfect.
Try to be back in 10 minutes if you can.